Okay. My call to order, the City of Lakeport Planning Commission Regular Meeting Wednesday, February 10, 2016. Linda, please call and roll.
Commissioner Gainer.
Here.
Commissioner Copper.
Here.
Commissioner Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Chair Wick.
Here. This evening, we have an acceptance of an agenda. Would anybody like to add anything to the agenda? Hearing none, I want to take in a motion to accept the agenda.
Honorable Chair, I make a motion to accept the agenda.
I have a first from Commissioner Gainer. Do I have a second?
I'll have a second.
Second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Citizen input. Do we have any citizens' input?
We had no requests from citizens.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Well, we'll do comments later. Moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the minutes as presented?
And you'll notice that these sort of take on a bit of a quasi-form. I mean, they're in regards to action minutes, but we were very careful to make sure that any amendments, they're made to conditions or anything substantive comments and stuff end up in their verbatim. So, open to comments on what you guys think about. I know it's quite different from the long form that you guys have been working with, but we tried to kind of find a nice hybrid balance. And I mean, it'll be, I think, you know, as a case by case goes on, I mean, if we have something that's more controversial, it's going to have to include some further dialogue because it ultimately is a record of this committee that we go forward to the City Council.
Any comments to that?
We're still being taped, correct?
Yes, and we, and I think by law, we're only required to keep those for six months. We tend to keep those for a minimum of two years.
That's a good idea.
My only recommendation was, as previously stated, that any public comments or long-faced projects that are currently in the works or have, like, for instance, the downtown, that those records be kept and in long-form request, it obviously for planning commission use or for council use to be written out because that's more pertinent. Because we've had, we've had evidence of minutes being forwarded that don't tell the whole story and that all it says is yes or no to a certain idea. And there has been some revisions. So, I would only recommend that in the long-term, bigger projects, we do a little more detailing.
Do we know it?
Thank you. Having hearing, no other comments on the minutes, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Honorable Chair, our motion that we accept the consent agenda and the minutes as posted.
I have a first from Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Copper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh. Okay, moving right along to item 6A. An award presentation to Commissioner Ross Copper. This presentation of appreciation and dedication of service to the service of City Lakeport.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, it's kind of bittersweet and sad. We made him stick around for a couple extra months beyond what he was originally committed to do, but we did want to take the opportunity to personally thank Ross for his dedicated service. He came on in October of 2002, so he's served over 14 years with, as a member of this commission. And my experience in working with Ross has been more at the county level in regards when he was at Air Quality. He always was very prompt in his comments and that's more, and it may seem like an overstatement, that's his job to do, but many other agencies, we were always banging down their door trying to get comments out of them and stuff, but I could always depend on Ross and those Air Quality comments coming back, being thorough. And so, in the year, just a little bit over a year that I've been here, he certainly takes that same mentality to the work that he does here on this planning commission. So, you're going to be duly missed, Ross. So, at this time, we do have an award that we want to, that we want to go ahead and present to him, but at that point, I want to open it up to the commissioners who have served on it. Feel free to say what you need before we kick him out the door.
Can I do it here?
Thank you, Ross.
No, well, thank you.
Very nice. Want to kick it off on this end?
Well, Ross, it's been a pleasure working with you. I've worked with you, and you and I are the original group, all now.
That's over.
Running commissioners. You've done a great job. It's been a pleasure working with you. We're going to miss you. It's been a pleasure working with all the commissioners and the staff over the years. Seen a few come and go. But I think you'll be in good hands with Kevin. I've worked with him for a long time before this. He seems to be thorough and right on on most things. I'm happy. Do I have to leave now?
No.
I'll do that.
Is it okay to say ditto?
Sure.
Ditto. And it's been a pleasure to work with you, Ross, and I'm on another committee with you at the Main Street Association, and he's, he's just all over the place and very, very efficient. And we, I can't say how important it is to have people like Ross that step up and do their civic duty and really learned a lot from you.
Well, I plan to stay involved.
Well, we hope so.
For me, I thank you because I can't think of how many times you've offered insights into things I had just read over and hadn't even thought of, especially when it comes to sequel stuff. So, I appreciate that.
Well, and for me, you know, I get teased a little bit for being meticulous, but my very first meeting on this commission was part of the annexation process of South Main Street. And I learned right away from watching you and listening to the questions that you asked and digging into the details that you were interested in, it was like, hey, this is a pretty serious deal. So, I followed your lead. And so, if I'm getting a little teasing, it's because of you. So, thank you very much for bringing us. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate your work, for sure.
Okay, so, is this where we extort money from it?
Right.
So, I'd like to open this up to the public because we have a public tonight, which is one of, so please come forward. State your name and give them a hard time.
Our esteemed new mayor.
I'm here tonight, and I'm not even running for my seat at the end of the year. Actually, two things. Two things. I wanted to ask Commissioner Taylor and helper, because you are the longest here. I can't remember when, when, oh shit, I can't think. His name was Willy, not Willie, old commissioner. Oh shit. I think, I think any of the commissioners, when they left, did any city council or mayors come down at any time? I don't remember any. And actually, Kevin, I'll put that on you for the future. I think when commissioners leave, especially after, you know, several years, I think it's important that either the mayor or somebody comes down and acknowledges them. And so, I'll put that on your, on your burdened shoulders as a guest.
I think that's fair.
All right. To Ross, I'd like to say it was my honor to serve with you for six years on the planning commission. I always thought you were genuinely vigilant in all the things that came before you on the planning commission. I never really felt like you were filling the seat. I never felt like you were holding the title. You're professional and you're informed. I think you carried out the years that you've been with us with heart and with knowledge. And I'm saying that as mayor, I'm saying it as a former planning commissioner, and I thank you and I wish you well. All the best for you.
Thanks very much.
Congratulations on your retirement. And I think he wasn't asking if, if he should leave, I think he was asking if he could.
Yeah, I knew where he was going. We're not going to let him.
Congratulations. Can I come back and check the papers since I sneaked out?
Sure.
Best of luck to you.
You too.
Thank you, Mayor Spillman, for coming down and.
That's quite nice. Thank you.
Very nice. Very considerate.
Okay, so, now let's get down to the meat and potatoes. Moving forward to regular calendar agenda B, this is Phase Two Downtown Improvement Project. This is the planning commissioner view of amended negative declaration for the downtown Lakeport Improvement Plan Phase Two, Recognizing ER 06-01. And this is to address noise and light impacts associated with the nighttime construction. Project is located on South Main Street between First and Fourth Streets. Kevin?
Yeah, before I hand it over to Dan, just kind of a, the main purpose of this was early on in our process of putting this project together, or at least a portion of getting the plans together and getting ready to begin speaking about construction, we had a couple meetings with, with the business community, and there were a lot of concerns about what the, what the construction would, and how that would impact our business. And one of the solutions that was explored was the potential to do the project over the evening hours overnight. And so, in order to do that, it was necessary to amend this initial study to reflect, you know, those additional impacts related to noise and a couple of areas that had, that have changed since this project originally came before you guys' review in 2006. But I'll let Dan handle some of the meat and potatoes. He's the one that did the physical amendments to it, and then we're certainly here to answer any questions because this is not a standard process we go through. Usually, you guys are the approving body for environmental documents, but in this case, that, our original environmental document in 2006 was, was approved by the City Council. So, as such, it needs to go back to them for final approval. So, any comments you make tonight, we will make sure that that gets forwarded on to the City Council. Dan, all yours.
Yes, as Kevin stated, the original initial study was done in 2006. There have been some changes to sequel regulations since 2006. In addition to that, the area was much larger. It went from, I believe, Armstrong to Fifth and down to Park and Third, and, you know, portions of Third and the Park Drive have already been completed. But this is the final part of it, and it's just the section from First to Fourth Street, basically, Main Street. Like Kevin said, probably if they were going to continue the work as proposed in the original initial study, would require an initial study, but since it's going to be at night, we'd kind of look at it, the three, well, there are two issues associated with night is light, obviously, and noise. There's a third issue with the tribal laws that have come forth over the past couple of years. And so, we looked at it and revised, took the original negative declaration, kind of revised some of the wording, calling it Phase Two, Plan Phase Two, worked it through, identified some of the issues, addressed them, but maintained pretty much the same mitigation measures that were originally incorporated into the original project. So, we now have to kind of reinvent the wheel and see which ones had to stay and which ones had to go. I believe out of all of them, I took one out that was concerning about nesting ducks. And since this is our Main Street, not our Park Avenue, I think we could get by without worrying about the ducks. So, if you looked, if you look at the handouts that I've kind of handed to you, we'll start with the noise issues. That seems to be the challenge. And if you kind of turn to the section, let me see here. Section number, let's see, that's number 12 in your initial study. You'll look at some mitigation, as well as the mitigations in the back of the initial study.
What page is that, Dan?
Let's see, the noise section is page 27, and the actual mitigation measures are on page 36, or actually, 37, 38.
Yeah, conditions 12 and 13 are specifically added in regards to noise.
Yeah. So, we looked, we went out there, we looked, we got a document off the website, was highway traffic noise. Basically, this, this document here lists just about every heavy equipment operation, what kind of noise they're generating, about 50 feet, how many decibels. And then we kind of incorporated it to a kind of a matrix of, well, if it's 50 feet is one distance, then 200 feet, and then 500 feet. You know, the most important thing to remember is that downtown is going to be relatively quiet. There's going to be some restaurants that are going to be open in the evening, but most of the businesses are pretty much shut down. And so, we kind of looked at it, and then we looked at our general plan. Our general plan says that we allow certain noise levels from 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then, after 10:00 PM, we have to lower it. So, what we tried to do is figure out which noise levels are going to exceed those levels, and then where are the impacts? Staff went out with a deci, decimeter? Or sound device? And we measured, we had actually the city's pump working, and that ran right at the machine. It was at 100 decibels. Subsequently, we walked up towards Ford Street, once it went around the corner and up the street. It significantly dropped, however, when we did it 2:00 in the afternoon. So, it wasn't a perfect measurement because there's still more ambient noise. Ambient noise wouldn't be there at, say, 10:00 at night or 1:00 at night. But we pretty, felt pretty firmly that the two-story structures significantly reduce noise impacts further away. And if you look at that, the map that was handed out to you, that shows where most of the residential units are within 500 feet of the project. And most of those are in kind of the sides, kind of the both sides of the project, both sides of the area. So, what we did, did a kind of a calculation using the highway traffic noise, incorporating that with distance, as another program showed us that distance with the reductions. And then we looked at, well, most of it's going to be screened by the two-story structures. So, the noise to those residential units would be in the elements that we could kind of live with. Basically, we're comfortable saying that the residential will be in their noise limits within the general plan. There may be occasionally some noise that exceeds, but it's pretty much going to be within those parameters. Now, we're not saying that it's going to be completely quiet. You know, it's, it's heavy equipment operating backing up, you know, they may be, they may hear noises, but it's going to be below the allowable decibels.
And that other piece of paper that he's got there in front of you comes from the PowerPoint presentation that we provided to the, we invited businesses and residents to take over. And that kind of shows decimal readings at the site, those obviously are going to be the highest, and then they, I think we've done, filtered off at 50 feet and then 150 feet. Those, those calculations are done assuming kind of a fat, a flat field, clear field projection. So, in reality, what we found with the, with the simple noise testing that we did, those numbers that you're seeing are probably, those are the maximum threshold numbers because in reality, the buildings shield those, that you actually get almost a 25, you know, 25-unit reduction because of those buildings. But nonetheless, we felt, you know, more appropriate to take those maximum numbers. So, you can almost reduce those numbers that you have there, not the ones at the site. Those ones stay right where they are, where the, where the noise is generated. But once you get right behind that sort of two-story wall of the downtown area, they, they drop off significantly. So, that's something to keep in mind, too. Dan and I have learned more than we ever imagined that we could learn about noise.
So, taking, finally, just taking out and looking at the mitigation measures now, one of the, one of the criteria is, we're kind of, as part of the overall RFP for the construction, we're including some comments that says after 10:00 PM, you have to use your quieter equipment, use your louder equipment prior to 10:00 PM, then your quieter equipment, or, you know, so, no jackhammers at 2:00 in the morning. I think that's kind of what we're looking, saying. And, you know, so, and then also, part of that RFP, we're going to require that there's be a contact person on site at all times with their phone number. So, we're going to try to get those phone numbers to all the, we're definitely going to send to all the businesses, but we're going to try to get it to the residents in your, within close proximity or relatively close proximity. And that kind of sums up, that sums up most of the noise issues and how we're mitigating to a lower standard. As far as the light, there's obviously doing at night, there's going to be some construction lighting, and we also have a mitigation measure, and that's also in the aesthetics section. And the mitigation measure on page 36, that basically says, and this is kind of the illumination requirements that we put on any single-family dwelling or any kind of commercial development with lights, that the lights be downlit, reduce it, potential impacts associated with glare off-site, you know, illuminate the areas you need to work on, obviously for safety reasons, but illuminate, you know, limit it so it doesn't impact those folks in the close proximity.
And once again, I mean, the, the nature of that downtown area, being mostly two-story buildings, also will help reduce the impact outside of the downtown area. I mean, the downtown area itself is certainly going to be impacted by, by the construction.
It's going to be like a megaphone with the tall buildings, but the buildings behind, it'll be like a bumper zone for the residents back, Fourth Street back. There are some people I know that live in some of the buildings along Main Street that would be impacted.
Correct. And we have talked with, with almost all those folks, they tend to also be business owners there, too, and they're, you know, said that they would, they will take a few sleepless nights over having their businesses closed or impacted severely during the day.
Right. So, after noise, I, the final issue is, or one of the last of the major issues that have come up since the original initial study, was it called AB 56. Basically, there's requirements that when we do a project, when there's excess grading, that we work with the local tribal groups to monitor the site. And, and so, we've added, there were some standard mitigation measures that were incorporated as part of the original project, and then we've kind of added on to those.
Is it five, six?
Yeah, five, six, and seven.
Seven, and then I think.
And eight.
And eight.
And basically, what that requires is, we'll be working, defining what exactly the potential impacts are. Now, removing sidewalk may not create a hole or any of that kind of thing because we're just removing the concrete, the soil's going to remain the same as it has always been. But there's going to be some replacement of some of the water lines and sewer lines connecting to the different commercial buildings along Main Street that may have to be dug out. And what we're working with the local tribe, the Poli Indians, is to maintain a kind of a, develop an agreement between the city and the representative from the tribe. At this point in time, we've requested a copy of their agreement so we can kind of review it and take a look at how they, how they're, what their perceptions are and what our perceptions are, so we kind of work together. At this time, we haven't heard back from them.
It's important to note, in regards, this is, the official review period for this initial study amendment began at the beginning of this week. It was legally noticed in the paper, and it began this week. We notified folks of this hearing this evening, but then also of the hearing before the City Council on March 1st. So, during that time period, we expect to be receiving comments from agencies. We sent these back out to all agencies that commented on the previous one to make sure that their comments are still valid. And so, those comments, as they're received, in addition to any comments that you have this evening, will be incorporated to that final document presented to the, to the City Council on March 1st.
And that, just about to say the thing I was going to say. So, at this time, you know, just I moved forward to adoption, or forwarded to the City Council for their potential adoption of the amended, mitigated negative declaration. And if there's any comments, we can incorporate it or analyze or review it as part of the process. We did receive some comments from Mr. Wick, and we would be revising the initial study, reflecting some of those comments.
So, I have one that has kind of been bugging me with this project. We're trying to make our downtown more presentable for tourists, for people to come, and I, what I'm worried about is, we do this small little section, and then, I don't know, there's a plan for Phase Three, if there's funding for Phase Three or whatever, but to do a little section and then have everybody say, well, when are we going to do the rest? When are we going to do the rest? You know, and people come and they go, why didn't you just do that little bit of part of the town? I, I'm all for it, the project looks like it's going to make it look really nice, but I'm just worried about how long it's going to be before we stretch it out farther down the street.
Well, you know, one of the things that I hate looking at is going back and looking at the original plans for this project because it stretched all the way back from Armstrong going up to Fifth Street, down, including Park, both along Second and Third Street. And unfortunately, this, this project really, you know, hit, you know, it fell, fell to the axe when redevelopment, when redevelopment came across. And in fact, I've been speaking with, with Margaret and then also Richard Knoll as well in the past. We're pretty lucky to have anything here. I mean, it was fighting with the successor agency tooth and nail to get these bond monies that were appropriated for this project back for these ones. At this time, there's, there is not a plan for, for those future blocks. It's our hope that we, that we can, and we've been working specifically with Paul Brown, our city engineer, you know, to kind of get some general cost estimates to include in our capital improvement project plans about what it would be necessary, how it would be necessary to, to do additional blocks. But unfortunately, the answer right now is, there's not a plan for those, for those other areas at this time.
Has the planning department gotten any comments from the other businesses where this is not going to be affected or they would like to have that done to their?
Not, not specifically, not in regards to the private self. Lighting in general, we've got some questions from some business owners down a little further on what it would take to, to be necessary to continue the antique lighting down, but as far as the sidewalk improvements and the roadway improvements and pedestrian facilities, no. I mean, we certainly, there are some aspects of this project that certainly can be carried over. I think the street furniture design element that gets approved with it can certainly bleed over to the other blocks. If there's, you know, somebody who would like to dedicate a bench, we can certainly carry some of those items over. The lighting is already carried over with the planer baskets and things like that and other areas. But no, you know, we, you know, and that's actually surprising now that I think about it, that, you know, because a lot of them, you know, several years ago, were under the impression that this would include their, their areas as well. But no, we really haven't got comments from those business owners.
I think someone else should talk about it. It's all right, keep going. Lay it out, that's what we're here for.
I would like to say that at the public meeting last month, the general contractor, I was very impressed with him, and he's, he seemed to be extremely cognizant of the issues that we've just been discussing, and to the point that he is building in the telephone attached to somebody's ear. And I think that the public turnout that we had tonight is a good example of how worried people are about this issue. But the mayor came, so this is good news. And Elizabeth came. But, you know, I just, I just think that they're doing a great job, and we'll, we'll see how it all comes out.
No, Paul Corin, our contract city engineer, this is certainly not his first project. I mean, he, he's done several, several of these streetscap and things, and it's evident. I mean, the project's getting ready to go out to bid, and the specs and requirements are huge.
Unbelievable.
They're, they're huge. I mean, he, he's, he's gone a long way in covering all the different scenarios. I think, you know, requiring that noise guy and some others to, to wear colored vests even. So, I mean, they are going to be readily identifiable if people have questions for them. So, no, we're, I am extremely thankful to have him taking part in this project.
I just couldn't believe the things that he was talking about at that, at that meeting. meeting, which was also not that well-attended. And that was specifically for the people that would be impacted by this whole issue.
Well, a lot of his, a lot of his comments are concerned, basically, well, there's been a long history of working with downtown members and...
Right.
Resolving issues raised during the past couple of months.
Yeah, I realize that, and that's exactly why I think there wasn't that huge turnout, because those issues have been addressed.
And ultimately, this, this whole solution that we're talking about today about possibly doing this project, well, not possibly, but doing this project at night, is, was a result of, of him saying, you know, we've done it at night in other areas, and, and knowing how to handle that situation, and, and, you know, bringing that up as an option in regards to some of the business, you know, concerns about the project, so. We weren't very thankful for it at the time, because Dan and I said, oh, great, now we've got to go update that environmental document.
Yeah.
No, but I, overall, it's, it's, the, the change in, in our relationship with the business owners and property owners in moving forward this project has dramatically changed since that moment, where I think they really feel like, before, that perhaps we didn't care, we're going to just ram this through and, you know, just suck it up and, you know, wait till it's done, to, hey, no, these guys actually do care about us. And, I mean, Paul's even designed specific ramps for each of the business areas there to go over at the time of construction, to make sure that, you know, if that concrete's still wet, it's going to drop right on, and those businesses are still going to be ready to go at 7:00 AM.
Yeah, the, the level of his interest on this is just amazing to me. I do have one question on the noise levels, because what, what this doesn't have is, and it was discussed at that meeting, the ambient noise just from traffic is pretty high, and what we don't have to compare with, what you've got here as far as the different tools, I would have liked to have seen those, those numbers.
You mean what it's existing at during...
Yeah.
Generally, generally, I mean, even, you know, if you go out there during the day when traffic's moving forward, I think you probably get, you're getting levels in the seventies or...
I believe it was like seventy to eighty.
Right.
You know, just on normal traffic and everything else, and...
So, it basically, we're not that much, we're not that far off.
No, but the noise that you're willing to tolerate during the day versus the noise that you're, you find acceptable in the evening is, is, is quite dramatic.
Oh, I, I, I get that, yeah. But it's, it's interesting that it's equal, it's almost equal. Maybe the jackhammer, but not too equal, but the...
They're, they're different, they're different noises. I, I think, you know, Paul has certainly built into the project that the, the most noisiest equipment is going to be associated with the physical demolition.
Right.
And that's going to be programmed into the schedule to take place between, the, the business owners have agreed to shut down early, give us that extra hour between 6:00 and 7:00 PM, and so that they have 6:00 to 10:00 PM to do that major stuff, you know, the jackhammering, the, the whole ram equipment that they use to pull up large pieces of the sidewalk. However, you're still going to have, you know, backup beepers, you're going to have generator noise from the lights, and, and, you know, just those, those different items that are still, you still hear them at, at 2:00 AM in the morning.
Just to give you an example, when we were taking the noise levels during that 2:00 in the afternoon, most of it was eighty, I think two Harley-Davidsons went by. When the Harley-Davidsons went by, it went to ninety.
Yeah.
So, ninety would be the same as a jackhammer.
Right.
And so, you know, when you're, when you're, when you're in bed at night, and you hear a Harley-Davidson going down highway, that's what it's going to sound like during construction.
So, we just need to think Harley on this, and we can deal with it.
Yeah. It just, I'm just, I'm just saying that, it's the same decibels.
I know. That's it.
Do you foresee any of the tribal or anyone really being out there all the time, needing to be, because they've already dug that area, wants to put the pipes in, and I can't imagine...
Well, that, that's what we've really tried to limit it to. Another area, Paul is providing us with a memo that we can work with the tribes on, showing that, okay, the sidewalks, the repaving, and even some of the utilities have, are taking place in previously disturbed areas. But the areas where there will be new impact is, we are relocating some of the water and sewer lateral connections that physically go to businesses. Some of those are back behind in the alleyways and across the private property that, that city folks are not able to get to, to the cleanouts and things without getting there. So, we're relocating some of those to the front of the buildings. That will be new excavation, and that's what we have in mind as far as those areas. And those are clearly identified on the plans, which ones are new versus old, and those are what we have in mind. We're still working with the tribes, but that's kind of the position that we've taken, that that would be the excavation that would involve the need for a, a onsite monitor.
One more.
Go ahead.
Do you foresee any difference in the traffic flows with parking and everything else?
I got scared a couple of weeks ago when we saw the newest plans, and it showed, you know, because the street is collapsing in a couple extra feet, and that we would be losing some parking in regards to, for site distance purposes, because the intersections are closer. But when I actually went out there, Paul and I ran out there, and we measured the, the red zones and stuff like that, and we, we should not be losing any parking spaces. And I say "should not" because it's really difficult to determine how many parking spaces are actually there right now, because all the markers are completely rubbed off. But when you do the actual measurement, if you go by city standards, we, we will not be losing any spaces. Granted, temporarily, we would be losing, you know, access to those parking spaces during construction, obviously, because the, the point is to do one side of one block at a time. And so, during that actual side of the blocks' construction, the parking will not be permitted even during the day, because that's going to be the area where public travel's going to go through. There'll be a designated corridor for them, but that's only for during construction. So, I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
It scared me a little bit, too. But, but we did confirm that, no, we're, we're not looking at losing any parking spaces.
Okay, so, there's going to be more traffic on Forbes Street though, obviously, for that whole period of time, which will move that Harley-Davidson thing into the more residential area, and then you guys...
Correct. The detour, you know, during construction at night will be along Forbes, and then also along, along Park. It's our hope that during the day, we're, we're actually going to have physical signs out there saying businesses are open along Main Street. And, you know, the street itself is going to be open during the day as well. So, but yeah, you're right, I mean, Forbes will be seeing some additional traffic in those evening hours, but I don't anticipate those to be above a, above a normal threshold.
Okay, and one of the things that I was looking at on this is where you go to the street intersections, where you're doing those intersection work, those are corridors, they're sound channels, really. So, any, any kind of work that's right at that intersection probably should be completed real early in the process, because it's going to channel, the sound's going to bounce off all the buildings going up, up the streets and down.
We were, I was kind of looking at that, too, I would, you know, and, because we were also looking at the fact that, you know, especially the one between Second and Third, where you have the courthouse, you have kind of an opening there, and there's, you know, there's some passages. The courthouse does create kind of a little bit of a screen by itself, do you understand?
Old one or the new one?
Well, both, both. But, yeah, we were, we were, I was thinking about that as part of this, is like, because that was the only place where the sound could come up, and, you know, we're only going a couple of feet on each one, I think maybe, what is it, twenty feet at the most or so? So, it should be a significant impact, they probably pull it right out, you know. Like, most, most of the work is when they're removing the, removing the concrete.
Right.
Jackhammering, ramming.
That's the time that you really want to get on it. I, I used to do noise measurements for the county in the geysers, what is 24/7. They were using, when people complained, they'd use sound blankets or barriers, put it up close to the equipment where it's working, and, and, and block some of that noise, keeps it on onsite, one of the options.
No, we can, we can certainly make note that, and speak with our, with our engineer, and you recommend that. You know, maybe, you know, definitely a mitigation measure that if we do receive complaints, that's something that can probably quickly be put into place.
And for the commission to understand that the decibel scale is like the Richter scale, it's an order of magnitude increase in decibels, I won't...
Right. So, if you have more than one camera going at the same time, you've got an exponential...
Yeah, so, it's, it's not a linear...
Yeah, no, it's not a linear relationship, and then the other thing, too, that is, topography plays weird games with it, too. I mean, so, we, we went out of our way in, in these community meetings in notifying a very large area, but that's not to say that, you know, maybe, maybe where the hill rises up there on Third and Fourth Street, that they may not actually end up getting a greater impact than, than some of the folks that may be right down along Forbes. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be, you know, but I think the chief mitigation measure that we have in place there is the requirement that's being built into the project that all of that loud actual demolition work is to occur between 6:00 and cut off at 10:00. That's the best control, that's the best controlled device we've got.
It's important to remember, like, if something makes ninety deci, like, one O-ramps while operating at ninety, ninety decibels, and a jackhammer is running at ninety decibels, it's not a hundred and eighty decibels.
Right.
It's up a little ways, but, you know, it may be ninety-five or...
I understand.
Well, we, we were, we were shocked, actually, how much it dropped off once you get right behind those, those buildings. I mean, we knew there'd be a drop-off, but it was actually pretty dramatic.
I have another complication, I would say, because it has to do with atmospheric stability and the, and the temperature differentials, and you can see on the lake at night, you know, where the cold air comes down out of the mountains, there's a little layer that forms on the, it's warm at the lake, and there's cold air above it, and sound waves will bounce off that interface, and you can hear the races and knees, just in that little channel, so...
Now, I'm...
There are little complications here and there.
We didn't analyze that.
I think it's a good plan, I think, I think you can make it work.
And, and the, the other key thing is, we will have a monitor there onsite at all times, and residents will be provided with their number, and so, I mean, if there are, if there are complaints, those will go directly to that person and be dealt with in a, in a faster manner. They don't have to wait the next day and call City Hall when we're open and have, you know, go through a whole communication tree. I mean, that was one of the things that, that we built into the project, is to make sure that there is someone there onsite who can address those as the situation warrants.
So, does that person onsite also have a decibel meter?
Yes, they will, they'll be required to have one.
More questions?
Yep.
Okay, so, this is the part of the program where we look at the document, and I have four specifics. I've already spoken to Kevin and Dan about this, but I would like this to be on the record. And these are, two of these are just declarations, and one of them is maybe consensus, I'm not sure, but on page four, item number four, it talks about the final placements of trees to set up. And what it mentions is taking into consideration, the final placement of the street trees will require careful analysis in order to avoid conflicts with light signage or building entries. At the two previous workshops, infrastructure was mentioned, and so, I'm asking the question as to whether or not infrastructure is pertinent to add to that particular sentence, or is that a condition that's, because it's all getting ripped out, won't matter? Because that was mentioned several times.
Well, we're adding new trees.
Well, you're adding new trees, but the placement of those trees is based upon infrastructure.
Yeah. And that has been reviewed by our city engineer, I believe he's walked it, for, you know, primarily, we looked at where are the potential impacts on the commercial businesses, signage, sign impact, blocking somebody's doorway, of that kind of nature.
Right.
You know, we'll, I'll double-check with our city engineer, but I'm sure he's, he's looked at where the water and sewer lines are.
Yeah, if you'll, if you walk that corridor any time later, you'll note that there are survey marks on the ground. Those are in regards to, I believe, one color is being used for the existing utilities and one is where new utilities will be placed, and those have been reviewed, and so, our tree wells, street lighting and stuff will not be in conflict with those, with those areas, so...
Great.
That has been reviewed.
Okay, great, so the, the infrastructure's not necessarily to be added to that particular sentence?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Well, I mean, you, you could, I don't...
Well, it's not necessary, so that's, thank you for that. Okay, so, the next one that I have, I only have four of these, so, and this one's a technical formatting on page twenty-one and page twenty-two, item eight. It starts off with letter C and moves forward, and it should start off with letter A and move forward, so the document may be confusing to somebody who's looking for response, so if, if that can be changed in some fashion...
Yeah, that will be changed prior to the city council. Basically, what I did is I edited everything, and then I said, oh, we still need to add the greenhouse gas section.
Right.
Because I was added since 2006, so subsequently, I added it, and it changed things around, so we'll be, we'll be fineifying that.
So, again, yeah, this is just for public record, so folks know. On page twenty-three, it talks about the reference and comments from fire police. You've indicated that those, those comments are yet to come forward. I would just like to reiterate that emergency response plans may be impacted, so it'd be interesting for the city council to ensure that the fire department is aware and have their equipment placed on the Forbes Street side, and whether or not there's going to be any sort of requirements for fire if they have to go south, and so, that'd be interesting in their comments, just so the emergency response plan is consistent, so...
Yeah, we'll make note, but yeah, as standard practice, that's, you know, generally one of the first things they do is...
Right.
Calendar it out and make that known to both, to all emergency personnel.
Okay. Page thirty-three speaks of circulation element, and we know there is no circulation element, so I believe that's a, that's to refer to the transportation element?
Yeah.
And so, we can get that corrected, that'd be great. And the last thing that I have is a recommendation, actually. I'm not sure how this is to, is going out to the public, I'm sure the website will have something, the record fee perhaps may have schedules listed as to maintenance and what have you. In looking at the work schedule phasing on the sheet, it talks about sidewalk west side and sidewalk east side between certain streets. My recommendation is, is to put a number in front of that as section one, section two, section three, section four. People get a pretty good idea of what that is, so if section one is really the, you know, the park, section two's going this way, three, four, five, and six, people will visualize that much easier, and that might be quite a bit of a help. People tend to ignore, from my personal experience, a lot of numbers and a lot of, a lot of words, so if there's a way to make it easier for recognition, that'd be great.
Sure, I think that's completely possible, and we're, we're kind of leaving the, our consulting engineer alone for a little bit while they prepare the big documents, but, but we are going to hit them up with, we would like to have a sort of architectural rendering to pass out to businesses, so that they can hang them in their windows and see it, and I think that we can certainly add that to request, to maybe break it into sections and include that with, with the calendar as well. I want to give a, a nice applause to our Lakeport Main Street Association, Panette, who's in here, went door-to-door to get contact information and email addresses for all the businesses that are within this corridor that we have now. Before, it was kind of, I was pulling teeth trying to, because we do send out notices for these type of meetings and community meetings, but she did go door-to-door and get us a nice comprehensive list that we will use in the future, now going forward, to notify businesses of, of impacts and things, and we plan on using that listing throughout the project as well. So, I mean, that's, that's a great asset for us.
Great. And, and I'm, I'm sorry, but there is one more thing, and this is probably not something that's... And I'm sorry, but there is one more thing, and this is probably not something that's that critical, however, we do have in the audience the resident who lives in this particular location. There's a residence on Third Street that's not located on this map, and it may be for city councils' reference, let them know that there actually is a residence there.
Yeah, and we've spoken with that gentleman and unfortunately, his location is one of the harder ones because he's right in that block where there is not the two-story wall. And those impacts are going to be probably more severe. The only sort of positive note on that is that block that will be the most impacting to him and his family does not include any special requirements. It doesn't require, you know, redoing grades and everything to get up to business level because it's just a park there. So that should be the quickest piece, but, but yeah, it's...
And I bring that up to sort of tie into Commissioner Copper's comment about the sound screening. In the past, I've actually been encountered with some of that myself, and it does, it does work, and so it is something to consider as a mitigation, because it may be, he has a young child, and that's a consideration. So it may be that maybe an extra step can be taken to see what can be done during the phases that may have a direct linear, you know, echoing effect upon that residence. I'm sure it wouldn't have to happen all the time, but something to consider.
No, I think we'll definitely take that back to our, to our engineer and see about, you know, possibly having those on-site if it's noted as a problem, that we can have some sort of immediate mitigation. I won't say solution, because it's not going to diminish everything, but some sort of mitigation to reduce any of that. But I also told him, I mean, he was very forward, he's got a young child, I have a young child. I know he's not sleeping anyways.
No, no. Any other questions?
I had a comment, I wanted to just reiterate that before he, the gentleman that's going to be affected got here, it was discussed that there's going to be, the majority of the really heavy-duty noise is going to be scheduled to stop at 10:00.
Correct.
So the real big stuff, the multi-jackhammers, the whatever that machine is that you were mentioning.
The whole ramp, yeah.
The whole ramp. All that stuff is really noisy and that's going to be done prior until 10:00.
Yes. But there's going to be some equipment operating from 10:00 to 7:00. I mean, 10 to 6:00, I'm sorry.
Oh, I...
There's going to be some noise.
Well, there's, I mean, it's construction.
Yeah, noise and vibration, actually.
It's going to be, it's going to be loud. I had a couple of questions and I don't know whether or not it was addressed, but at Pieces Boutique, they have a pillar this big, right in the middle of, as you walk out their door. And I just wondered how, or how, there's, I don't know, maybe Ross could tell us, owning a number of those buildings there. I noticed when I looked at the entrances that there's going to be ramping, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that's, that's going to be a real engineering feat in itself, but I know that there's requirements, ADA requirements, for those entrances and exits. And I looked at it and it's, it's kind of like, maybe two feet, a hair or more.
Is this one on Fifth and Main?
No.
No, it's right beside Cheeses.
Yeah.
Pieces Boutique.
Okay.
And, I mean, the pillar is, is a good eight, nine inches diameter, and it looks like it's holding up the entire center of the building.
It is.
Yes. And I talked to Ross before about, about Cheeses itself and that there's certain areas around that doorway that are holding up the building. They're fundamentally integral to holding the building, which is going to be real interesting.
So it's bearing a weight?
Oh, big time, yeah.
We're not going to be touching any of the structural supports, I mean, but the grade may be changed.
Right. I just wanted to go on record to please call that to their attention. They may have, may or may not have noticed it.
No, they probably noticed it. Our engineers defined, designed every entrance, every structure on Main Street. They evaluated everything to the grade.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the major challenges to this project, was because, you know, I didn't notice it until it was brought to my attention. When you walk down, you see all those different entrances are at different levels, and in the worst case scenarios, there are, there are two sections where we'll actually be having to provide ramps to the doors. It's not pieces though, but we're not going to be moving that pillar. We'll be adjusting the grade around it, but that pillar won't be going anywhere, it'll still remain.
Correct. Okay. Well, those ramps will be interesting too. I was trying to figure out how they were going to do that, and on the maps, I couldn't quite...
Yeah, there's, there's not elevations on there, but...
It doesn't show.
It's not, ramps going right into, they're changing the whole sidewalk to work with all the, so it's going to be more gradual throughout the whole sidewalk, basically.
And they're basically having to raise the street, aren't they, a little bit?
I don't, no, I don't think the street changes a whole, it was, the curb face right now is completely even, I mean, all the way across downtown. That's not going to be the case, but you're not really going to notice that it's going to change in elevation, because not only did you have to make it ADA compliant, but you still got to make sure that, you know, you can't change water from, you can't make it go uphill, so you've still got to keep your drainage pattern in place. And so that was, that was a complicating factor for the project, but they reviewed that with every single, every single doorway and then made sure that all the drainage and everything complied afterwards and all the ramps and everything like that, so.
Yeah, that stuff was, looked pretty tricky.
It's not easy. That's why I'm not an engineer.
Right. Oh, no, it looked very tricky. That was it. Thank you.
Yes. Just one, one thing, and it was a mitigation thing that I was looking at, not so much on here, but, you know, these buildings on First and Second Street on the west side are pretty old buildings. Has any consideration been put to whether or not some of those plate glass windows can withstand the shaking?
I don't know the, with the plate glass windows, but the, our building official went with, went out with our, with our engineer and analyzed each of those buildings specifically in regards to their subfloors and looking at the ones that have basements and stuff and made sure that all those were in a condition to seismically handle, and also to make sure that we weren't going to run into any complications removing the sidewalk and stuff, so.
Yeah, they were looking at it like, you know, sometimes with 100-year-old buildings, you have like an old redwood foundation or something of that nature. So they wanted to, especially on the east side of Main Street, it drops right off the sidewalk, and a lot of the businesses have basements right there. So they did some inspections. I'm not sure, they, I'm sure they looked at the building, but I think...
Well, and you start hammering closer and closer to the, to the stem wall or to any particular wall, you're going to pick up a lot of that vibration. Those buildings are pretty old. And, and so it's just an interesting thought, whether or not the windows were going to be impacted. So I'm not sure how that's measured, but something to consider.
If they are, I mean, that's all, that's all taken, I mean, the contractor's going to have to replace those in kind, but hopefully they'll take a strategy.
Well, yeah. We hope that the business owners aren't affected by it, should it happen.
Yes.
And I'm not saying that it will. I'm just bringing that up as a, something to think about, so. Okay, any other questions, staff? No? So I will open this up to the public, if anybody wants to come up and speak to this subject. More than welcome. All right, straighten up, he's here again.
I'm here again. Actually, I was going to get the heck out of here before you guys got into this. The only thing I wanted to comment on was Commissioner Taylor's comments about Phase Three, and we haven't had any discussions on this, but I was, I was kind of hearing the same thoughts. My thought is, and this is only my thoughts, not thought of the city and the stuff, the thought of the council, but if you want to continue with Phase Three, you can look at that as a council. And the first step to that, whether it's a city project or whether it's a park project, is you get the, you get the engineering done, you get the plans done. And the reason being for that is if funding comes through, if suddenly there's a magic dollar out there that is available and you've got a government that's sympathetic, that we only got part of our project done, and look what beautiful blocks we have here, and suddenly we have this engineering project and we can complete another two blocks or three blocks, spend the money to get the engineering done if you want to do the project. That's my opinion, and that's the opinion that I'm going to project to the city, is at least get the engineering done. I know it's not popular to the public sometimes, because it seems like you're spending money on a set of plans that may not happen, but if it's something you want to do, get it on the shelf and have it ready to go if the funding's there, and then work to find the funding. So that's just my opinion.
One of the pieces we looked at in this is, in the off-chance, that we don't use the project contingencies, you know, because naturally you've built a, you know, 15% contingencies on these things, that we do have it estimated out, that it's approximately $200,000 to $300,000 to repave a block section in the downtown area. So that's something that our engineer hasn't looked at, is that in the off-chance, it's probably not likely that, that we don't, that we still have some contingency available, that we may be able to do some of the overlay, that would be improvements to sidewalk or changing any of the connections and stuff, that was something, because this money is specifically earmarked to, to that project area, so it's still within the bounds of the old projects, that's a, that's a possibility, but I wouldn't hold your breath. But I was tagging also onto what the mayor just spoke of, we actually had a meeting today with our regional transportation body, and although the picture is very bleak for roadway projects in general, the money that is available is in the area of pedestrian and bikeway improvements, so, and that same, that same process was echoed to us today. If you have your engineering in place for future projects, you're more likely to, to be able to take advantage of those grant opportunities when they come available, so that's something we're exploring as well.
Anybody else in the public who would like to speak to this? I'm in here, no? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to commission.
I would like to ask if this is something that the city could do as a bond, Florida does bond, to be able to get the funds, to be able to extend the area that we haven't been able to afford.
I may be asking a lot.
I mean, it's a, it's a big number. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing that out, because the bond could be for the engineering as well.
Well, not, not within the timeframe of this project, but you're talking just in the future?
For the future, Phase Three.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's always a possibility, but I mean, you know, you're, you're guided by all the Prop 218 requirements and, you know, that's, that may be something that falls into a, a specific category rather than a, than a general category which requires the two-thirds provision, so I think it'd be, I think it'd be pretty difficult, but I wouldn't want to rule it out. I need any option.
I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah.
And I'm really glad I don't have your job.
You know, just to kind of, kind of throw a little thought on top of that, part of specific planning is identifying land use, and if, if the city decides at some point that they really want to push the planning to the north or to the south, they can set up workshops and say, what do you think? And get the ball rolling on that and get some preliminary things going, which doesn't cost a whole lot of money. So you can get community input by throwing these workshops up and saying, you know, what do you think of what happened at downtown Phase Two? How far would you like to see it go? Get that buy-in, and then you never know what's going to happen at that point. You might find some interest, you might find leverage, you might find a lot of things, so that's something to consider as well.
Well, and the, you know, the eternal sort of optimistic approach, I mean, the long-term vision of this is that what you're doing is you're, you're improving the overall downtown, which in turn is going to bring more people in, which in turn helps, you know, the business community there, which in turn helps your, your sales tax revenue and your other sites, so that hopefully somewhere down the line, you have more opportunities and more revenue sources to pursue future projects. I mean, it, you know, Economic Development 101 talks about, you know, a strategy of put all your resources into that one spot, get all your infrastructure up, and then build out from there. And that's kind of what we're doing in this case. We're hitting the core, which is unfortunate because the original project went out much further, but the idea is that, you know, this project is supposed to help lift that entire area and then in turn hopefully give us the opportunity at a future date to, to expand upon that. So that's a glass half-full approach, but it doesn't happen overnight, but that's, that is the idea behind the economic development aspects of the project.
Anything else?
One last thing. On your city project milestones, completion and punch list of Project Eight, 2916.
Oh, that's, yeah, it's going to be done before 2916.
Well, we figured that gave us, that gave us a lot of cushion room there to be like, sure that we can get these things done.
We're going to make great, great, great grants and make sure our...
Can't get anything by this guy.
No, no, not at all. He passed the test, Ross.
I have to stay.
Yeah. Okay, anything further? We do have a suggested motion forwarding this to city council. So I would entertain a motion at this time regarding this matter.
Honorable Chair, I move that the Planning Commission directs staff to forward the amended mitigated negative declaration for the downtown Lakeport Improvement Plan, Phase Two, to the city council for their review and adoption.
And to probably, and to include any...
Any changes that have been mentioned.
I have a first from Commissioner Russell. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Gainer. Linda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Copper?
Aye.
Commissioner Gainer?
Aye.
Chair Whip?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
And yes, we will certainly, we'll take all these comments forward, as long, as well as any other comments that we've received from commenting agencies or the public, and make sure that those are in the record for the city council, who will be taking this item up on March 1st at 6:00 PM, so I can get that on the, on the record there as well.
Okay, moving forward. Item 6C, Planning Department, 2015 Year End Report. This is a summary of various land use applications, road enforcement activities, and nuisance abating activities for the 2015 calendar year.
It's not particularly pretty. I mean, you know, it was, it was a little, you know, we knew that it was slow, but sometimes until you actually physically count the application and see, I mean, we've certainly, there's a, I think I calculated it out, an almost a 60% decrease over the previous year in 2014, which was not a great year either. So it were, you know, to kind of, but it is a, it is definitely an outcome of, of the recession that we're coming out of. Typically, Lake County sees a longer lag period in recovery, and we're starting to see that in other areas of the Bay Area, specifically that those areas, so we're hopeful that it is coming our way. We're, we're as a staff trying to utilize this time as best as possible to catch up on some of those long-range planning items and be prepared when that, when we do get the projects returning to us. We certainly noticed this past couple weeks, I don't know if it's an outcome of nicer weather or what have you, but we certainly do notice an increase in inquiries at the county in regards to projects, but they haven't physically translated into actual applications at this time. So I don't know in specific if there's anything too much to say. I also threw in a note, just to kind of, it echoes what we're seeing. On the land use side, on the construction side, we only saw, you know, one single-family residential completed in 2015, and that's down 50% from the whole big two that we received in 2014, so. It will change, but like I said, we're trying to take advantage of this time where we do have a slow period to kind of catch up on, on some of those, on some of those pieces, so. Certainly can entertain any questions you, you have in regards to these, but with your, the last thing, we'd like to just forward this on to the city council for their, for their adoption into their record as well.
Any questions?
No.
No.
I did have one question on the Autozone, and just for public record. I did have one question on the AutoZone, and just for public record, I asked about the cleanup, and I was assured-
Time out, time out, we're still on memorandum.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, I'll talk about later.
Is it on the memorandum?
No.
No, okay.
It's on that project, excuse me.
All right, so, there is, and this doesn't require a public hearing, but if anybody would like to speak to this, and I see nobody in the audience, so we're just going to forego that, there is a suggested motion to forward this to the City Council, so at this time I will entertain a motion.
Honorable-
Go ahead.
I move that we forward this to the City Council.
So, a first from Commissioner Coffer, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Gainer, Linda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Coffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Gainer?
Aye.
Chair Whip?
Aye.
Passes five-o. Okay, now, moving to-
Now, I can talk about-
Yes, now.
Sorry about that.
How are you going to do?
Okay, let's do this in order, so now what we have here is the Item 7 correspondence and planning projects pending, and this is a list of current planning department pending approval as of February 4, 2016. Commissioner Russell?
Could we get a report on the AutoZone? I'll just say it that way.
Sure, yeah, first, to let you know that the City Council did take up their public hearing on the Zone Change Request, they didn't make any changes, and they went ahead and adopted the project per your guys' recommendation. We have already been speaking directly with the applicant in regards to plan check requirements for the building stage and items required for the final map, and they look like they'll be hopefully submitting that here in short order. In regards to your question as far as the hazardous materials spill at that site, prior to the City Council meeting, I spoke directly with the Lake County Environmental Health Department with Ray Reminski to discuss that sort of cleanup, and what had happened is approximately 24 gallons of, that area is being used in support of, they contractor working directly with PG&E for cleanup-related activities with the valley fire, and one of the items that they're doing is replacing some of the damaged transformers, so they actually had a truck there, they had a few of those transformers on there, they accidentally spilled one of those with 24 gallons of the mineral oil mostly that was in there, but unfortunately it was an older one, that contained some of the PCBs which have long since been outlawed in use, and it was further compounded by, it was, we were in the middle of a storm event, and so it traveled rather quickly along that property. What they have done is they have gone through with their standard protocols, working directly with our local environmental health division, and then also with the EPA, and then also PG&E also has a standard protocol that they observe, and they have isolated it, they did testing on it, found that there were concentrations above the levels, and they have removed the first layer of soil there, putting down all the protection so that future water runoff will not be affected, and the last I heard was they were waiting for soils tests on that top layer, where they, what they did, they removed the top layer, they took a reading, if the readings at that next level are below the thresholds, then they're complete, they'll bring in new topsoil, return the site back to its existing condition, if they're still getting hazardous readings, then they'll have to go and remove the next section. In the meantime, all the plastic and everything will stay in place until that's determined. I did see going by the site here yesterday that there is a bunch of new topsoil, I don't have any information, but I'm sort of left to assume that those readings did come back, and it looks like they're getting ready to return that site back to its original condition, but I don't know that for a fact.
Okay, I was kind of surprised that they still have all those containers of the old dirt on-site, it's covered, and it's in those trailers that will be shipped out of here, but they, I don't know, they must have 15, 20 of those things.
They removed a lot of, yeah, I mean, they, when I was talking with Ray Reminski, he said that if that would have happened on a dry day, they're probably, you know, excavating a 30 by 30 area, but because it was during a storm event, it affected a large portion of that site, including, you know, getting into the drainage there at Pier 1900, so.
Well, I understand from the manager there that they keep dredging and dredging and dredging, which he's very happy about.
Yeah, probably not the reasons that they would like the city dredging.
Not for the reasons that they would like it, but, yeah, it seems to be taken care of quite efficiently by PG&E. That's it.
Well, you know, once AutoZone starts construction and they're digging their footings, isn't that going to get down below the level where they were digging right now?
Well, if the soil tests come back showing that that next level is contaminated, they'll have to come in and remove that level too, they'll keep removing it until they get the thresholds, get below those EPA thresholds.
My understanding, a 50-year-old construction company having equipment all over that site, which- Mike Brothers Construction?
Oh, yeah, it's one of those, it's like no good deed goes unpunished, you didn't push them too hard because they were there assisting with the valley fire efforts, and then that's sort of how they're rewarded, so, I wasn't particularly happy to see it happen.
But AutoZone might-
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, you know, I spoke with the project engineer on there, he didn't seem to think that it would have any effect upon their project other than if they were still there when, within the timeline of when they wanted to be there, but he was under the assurance from the property owner that that would be completed by that time too.
My observation is the site looks a lot better than it ever has.
Yes, it really does.
About two years ago, we had a looking into by the state for building a new courthouse, has anything ever come of that?
Actually, you know, we worked directly with the Administrative Offices Courts, although they've renamed themselves now, I don't know what they're physically called, but we actually just got approached by them for a letter of support, they're going back to their coffers, per se, looking for an additional $6 million to complete the project, where some of the issues we were running into at the last conversation with them a couple months ago was trying to get ADA compliance for that site with a pathway back down to Lakeport Boulevard in that area, because they're looking at that site right, the bench right below the Chamber of Commerce area. So, we've been assured by State Senator Maguire and Assemblyman Dodd that the relocation of the Lake County Courthouse is still a top priority for the state, so hopefully, if they're able to secure that funding, then we should see that project moving forward.
So, this is a practical question, why is that site on a hillside with rocks more attractive than a flat surface or any other location on South Main Street?
We were not involved in the site selection.
The city has no say in this?
The city doesn't have any say in that selection, they, you know, we suggested a few sites, but that was the site that they identified and that they entered into escrow and have proceeded, but I mean, in my opinion, it seemed like the issues are coming home to roost now, I mean, it's a difficult site, and we've expressed our concern about a very public building being so isolated up in that area, and you know, their first original, they didn't have any pedestrian path going back down there to Lakeport Boulevard.
And is it zoned?
What's that?
Is it zoned for beauty?
Yeah, no, I mean, that whole hillside area, including that bench, is zoned correctly for their use there.
Okay, well, I guess we'll find out, Caltrans being a corridor and everything that goes along with in-and-out intersections and possibly street intersection connections.
Well, when we were working with them last about trying to get them to pay their fair share for traffic improvements regarding their increased area there, we spoke with Caltrans and were surprised that they hadn't been contacted or involved in any element to the project as of yet, so I mean, that's, those are pieces that the city, we're continuing to stay on top of.
Right. Well, I guess we'll see.
Well, yeah, we're certainly keeping a monitor of it because thus far, they've, you know, they can get away with it, they'll get away with it.
You know, one of the things that we've talked about for a long time, and before I resume on this commission, was the cohesiveness and continuity of the city of Lakeport, and how, what 11th Street was built, and how, you know, what's now Bruno's was built, how it pulled the center of town apart, and it caused two different corridors, and it really took away from the downtown experience, and so now we have a project potentially that's going to do the same thing, where it's taking a public-use courthouse and taking it away from the courthouse here, and so now you have two locations, really we have several locations of the courthouse function and offices, but now you're starting to do the same thing, and so I'm just questioning out loud the wisdom of it.
Those were the comments that the city made too, is that the movement of that site seemed counter to smart growth principles, counter to our community design element of the general plan, you're talking about the locating of public services and things like that in the downtown area and in a pedestrian-friendly area, although that building does have its own challenges to access as well, so, we're continuing to stay on top of them and trying to ensure as they move forward that project that it benefits the community as best as we can make it, but it certainly is going to have an impact upon that Lakeport Boulevard corridor, and we haven't got them to really pay attention to that as well as we think is necessary, and we've, as such, have reached out specifically to our state representatives and would continue to work with them to get them to work with us.
Okay, anything else?
I was just wondering, because I dealt with the courthouse, one of the agencies in there for our commercial building that's right catamaran from there, and I was told, and I had the experience, that they pretty much write their own rules, do we have any say-so over anything that they're going to be doing with that courthouse?
Well, the thing to remember is that they're not, they're within the justice arm-
That's, that's it, yeah.
-of the state government, so I mean, they're not even in the same playbook as, say, Caltrans is, which reports to the executive function, so, I think that was reflected in review of their SEQA document, which was approved without even having a site plan for their proposed building in place, so, and we've been told that from our state representatives as well, that they're harder to work with because they're not under their control, they are under the judicial arm of the state government.
Right.
They get to make the rules, they get to do what they want.
They make the rules.
I shouldn't say that, it's a little flippant, so I apologize to the state for that.
We're doing our best to keep them honest.
Yeah, well.
Anything else? I have one thing regarding this piece of paper, and it's Item Number 2, Lake County Cars, I noticed that we see this on the sheets every month, and it says date received 2013, and this is 2016, so I guess my common sense question is, when are we getting resolution to this particular problem, and what is the solution?
Well, we've sent some correspondence out to them, you know, lately we've been talking to some other projects, not particularly this one, but they haven't, you know, they're out there, and it's a project I think that was completed, I, you know, going-
I know, you weren't here by the end, but-
I wasn't here until 2013, but it's still kind of dragging on the fire.
Well, so, you know, as it says, it's a garage addition to the property already in place, and request copies of site plan and project description, what this is telling me is that this was an illegal build, and it's still an illegal build three years later, and so I'm asking, I guess the common sense question is, if it's going to stay there, what is going to happen to rectify this after three years, because if they're getting away with it, so are other people, and I have emails and I won't, but it's sitting at rest.
We're pushing the violations, we are pushing some of the violations, it probably will be receiving hopefully soon, an application from NAPA Auto Parts, for example, is another project that was kind of developed without any permits, we finally got ahold of the applicant and stated, you know, this is the application, I handed out an application about two days ago, will probably, you know, I'd like to push, because nobody likes to see an application that's sitting there for-
Can I ask a simple question? I'm sorry for this, but what's an application going to do for a structure that's already built?
Well, that would give the choice to the Planning Commission to deny it, and I guess we could kind of say-
They have to move forward through an abatement action.
Yeah.
It really has to go that, it has to go that route?
We have, yeah, we can't just go out there and require them to take it down, I mean, we have to go through a process.
We can tell them it needs to be removed, but if they don't remove it, then our only recourse is through our violation process, which would be an abatement action, and we'd be required to go through the big process of remove it and leave the property.
And I'm assuming when planning staff talk to these folks, that's what they said, and, because there is an architectural design review application, it was deemed incomplete a long time ago, and so we're kind of like waiting for some other submittal, I guess we could at some point set it for hearing and start moving it forward as a recommendation for denial, if that would be where the Planning Commission would pursue.
Well, I'm not, at this particular meeting, I'm not going to go forward with making recommendation, but I'm stating it, I think, pretty clearly that a precedent is getting set here where people can build what they want and sort of thumb their noses at the city, and the city's not doing much about it, and in the private sector, somebody builds something that's not up to snout, the state comes in and says, "What did you do? Here's your red flag, here's your, you know, as a contractor, you can't do this, and if you do it again, bad things happen, you might even lose your license." So, it doesn't seem to me equitable that somebody can do what they want to do within the city of Lakeport, and the city has no recourse other than to ask them politely multiple times until they either capitulate or actions as you've just stated take place, and in this case, it's three years later.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't seem quite fair to the rest of the people that live here that somebody can get away with that. That's just my take.
Certainly, certainly not, I'm not going to disagree.
Maybe a discussion for the next meeting, maybe so.
Well, we could send them a letter saying that if they don't comply with the submittal request, it's project incomplete at this point in time, needing more information if they want to pursue the project, we could send them a letter saying, "At this point in time, we're going to recommend to not go, send it forwarded to the Planning Commission with recommendation of denial, because we can't approve a project that's incomplete", and then we take that step forward.
And then after that, we pursue it once again as a zoning violation.
Right, well, like, so I'm not trying to give you guys more work, but just as a practical matter, I'd like to see this particular item off the sheet, to be honest, I think that we've seen it enough, so that's just for me. Okay, so, moving forward, comments from staff and commissioners, does anybody have anything they'd like to bring forward or mention?
Have we heard anything about the senior project?
We're supposed to be meeting with that developer here in the very near future, he wanted to come down next week, unfortunately our engineer wasn't available, means we're going to have to come up with a different date, but it seems, he seems to be very optimistic, I haven't heard anything from the grant awarding folks, if anything's changed at the federal level, but he wants to come and talk to us about engineering requirements and stuff moving forward, so, I think I took that as a positive step, but I have not heard anything specifically that he has been awarded a grant, but we're hopeful.
Half-full.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, do you have to schedule a meeting?
Do you have to schedule the next meeting? I think it would be appropriately if you told them when the next meeting would be, and yeah, absolutely, but no, you do not have to be here for the next meeting. You're more than welcome to attend and comment on the projects as you see fit. You're more than welcome to attend and comment on the projects as you see fit, but...
Yeah, you know, unless we don't have a quorum, then we may have to go.
I was going to say, you know, one of these things is to show up, and then when it comes time to gabble, then you can just rip. I'll give you the time.
We do have an application in for replacements, so pending approval by the City Council next Tuesday of the nomination, we'd be swearing a replacement in.
Are those applications still open?
Well, they are, they're still technically open. If someone wants to get one in before...
Anybody in the public that's interested in becoming one of us and doing our community due diligence, so to speak, please apply. The information's in the newspaper, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, not hearing of anything else, we'll move it to the discussion, well, not discussion, I take it back, it's, we're going to schedule our next meeting, barring any special meetings or emergencies, for March 9th, 2016, and with that, we are adjourned.